Evening. The special call council meeting for October, August 19th, 2021 is now called to order. We will begin with some comments, which I have no cards. We will now move to budget items. Consider an ordinance adopting the 2021 tax rate and levying said rate.
Good evening. The approval of the property tax rate is the last action to be made on the budget. The proposed tax rate is 14.59 cents for debt service, 41.30 cents for operations and maintenance totaling 55.89 cents. And this is the same overall tax rate as the current year. Also, as expected, due to increased property values, the total tax rate is higher than the no new revenue rate of 54.62 cents. The no new revenue rate is a rate that would be used to produce the same amount of revenue as the current year. So as the property values increase, as they did for next year, the no new revenue rate will decrease below the total property tax rate. And because of the revenue generated from the increased property values, a special motion must be made. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any question, Ms. Cohen? If not, do we have a motion?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 55.89 cents per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 2.32% increase in the tax rate.
Is there a second?
I second that.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We need to clarify this really quick, just to make sure everybody understands something. Even though it sounds like we just increased taxes, we did not increase the taxes. By which that means the rate per $100 valuation. State law requires us to present our budget and tax rate in a manner we did tonight. Historically, we've talked about tax rates as the actual tax rate, which is 55.89 cents per $100 valuation. But now state law requires us to present specific language, which refers to our tax rate discussion, not in terms of rate per valuation, but in terms of total tax revenue. So our total community property valuations have increased resulting in additional revenues. However, for the last two decades, the only time we have increased our tax rate has been related to vote or approve bond elections, not this council or prior councils increasing the tax rate to generate more revenue for our general fund budget. Those have been due to increased property values, which we have no control over. That's the appraisal district that controls the property values. They set those property rates and then they give those to us to adjust our budget. Correct, Mr. Bonds?
That's correct.
So we did not raise the tax rate. We're fortunate that the property values have increased. We don't, I mean, we always want our property values to increase. That's a sign of a strong economy. You don't want your value to decrease. That means you're losing money by living in the same property or owning the same property that you used to have. So we want that to happen. But we did not raise the tax rate. Just so you understand, a penny increase in our tax rate would represent about $553,000 in revenue. So in this budget, this 2122 budget, it includes a 3% across-the-board pay raise. This year's pay raises are in addition to the police and fires regular step 3% increase. Now let's go back and I'm taking the long way around, guys, so I need you to understand where I'm coming from. I've had a lot of discussion this week with people about a tax increase of 3.5 cents. That's not us, but that's in the discussion. So in 2015, when I first became mayor, we adjusted our pay scales for the police to match those of Tyler because we were underfunded and understaffed in our police force. At that time, we elected to utilize $760,000 in fund balance to make this happen. But we've been able to absorb those increases into our regular budget. It was a one-time usage of our fund balance. In 2018, when we brought the firemen salaries up to where they needed to be, we again used the fund balance to accomplish this, but the next year, we also incorporated that into our regular operating budget. Because it's been my philosophy as the mayor to utilize the fund balance when necessary for one-time usages, instead of raising taxes, which continue every year thereafter. So if we were to raise the taxes to fund the police and fire raises for that year, unless we decrease the taxes the next year, that tax rate continues to generate income for your entity. I feel that you can spend your money better than we can spend your money, and I don't think it's something we need to stockpile in our fund balance. Our fund balance that we have is a result of good conservative budgeting, a strong economy, and decreased spending, which is what we try to do as the City of Longview, as our council and our governing body. It's not the result of tax increases, which if we did increase the taxes, it's $553,000 for every one cent we would increase our taxes. We could easily build up our fund balance by raising taxes, but as I stated before, I think you should be in charge of your own money. Because I've been approached a number of times this week by constituents wanting to know why we're raising taxes 3.5 cents to pay law enforcement. That's not the City of Longview doing that, okay? That is not us doing that. The city and county are two separate entities, so they function independently of each other. We don't have the same budgets. We don't have the same law enforcement. The county law enforcement is the sheriff's department. Our law enforcement is LPD and our fire department. So please direct your inquiries to the appropriate governing body, because the City of Longview is not raising taxes. So I hope this clears things up a bit, okay? Clear as mud?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Thanks for that. Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, councilman. Thank you, everyone involved in this budget process. Once again, it's nice to have another one behind us. It's been, once again, another long, hard summer. We are now to the consent agenda. Any items council would like pulled off for separate discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
If we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would not consider resolution adopting Longview Economic Development Corporation 2021-22 budget? Mr. Mansfield, welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. A pleasure to be here with you. I would like to start off saying, in past years, the mayor's given me eight minutes to present. Tonight, he told me five. So I will try to move through this very quickly.
Because I've already read the budget, Wayne, that's why.
So I'll try to move through very quickly. Our budget, you know, last year was, of course, a very strange year with COVID, and we did decrease our budget because the normal events and things that we do in economic development, road shows, trade shows, meeting with consultants, nobody was doing that. So our travel decreased and our marketing decreased. This year, we're just going back to the pre-COVID levels. So you will see that. Just, Mayor, we're not increasing anything in a couple of categories, but everything's going back to pre-COVID. Right now, we have, for the year in review, this past year, we generated 17 proposals, a little over one a month, and had seven site visits, a couple of which were very successful for us. Right now, we're working nine new projects with potential of over 1,700 jobs and capital investment of almost $300 million. So we're still being very active, and we're starting to see activity pick up considerably here in the past few months. Wanted to throw this slide in here just to show, I think it's a really good indication, and five years is a good measuring period, just to show what LECO's done within the past five years in the projects and expansions that we've assisted with or participated in. You're looking at a total capital investment of over $425 million. This is a net direct benefit to the city of almost $62 million over 10 years and to the county of $32 million over 10 years. So this is, I really wanted to show the efforts of LECO in the past five years from the LECO board and the partners that we have too, including SWEPCO, the school districts, and so forth. Mayor, to really emphasize your point, a very strong economy, and we'll continue to move forward. I also wanted to show this because a lot of people often question, you know, LECO's, back in 1996, I believe, the voters gave LECO the authority to provide type B projects, the trails of which has been a big part of it. But I also wanted to show some of the other projects that we're engaged with. George Ritchie, we helped fund, the trails to the tune of almost $5 million. In my capital budget, you'll see this evening, we did put in our share for the traffic signal at George Ritchie and McCann, the land value for the fire station in the North Business Park, which is going to be a really good amenity to help attract industries there, and then also the police and fire training academy in our Longview Business Park. So we're excited about partnering with the city on these type B projects. And as we continue to move down the road, Keith and I have had some brief discussions about this in my board, as well as what we want to see and help partner with the city on these type of projects moving forward. Again, like I said, the trails funding, our budget and these numbers were obtained from Public Works Department. Dwayne provided them for me. This will be our last year to fund the trails of $677,000. And then the Tech dot grant that we secured, the project hopefully will be completed here in the very near future. Now moving into the budget for this year, our projected revenues, those are numbers that are obtained from Angela and her team that were funded by the quarter cent sales tax. So our proposed budget revenues for this year are just over $6 million. Our revenue fund interest has decreased mainly because our interest rates have decreased, and that's true across the board. And also, I like to be very conservative with that interest number. And I sit down with our accountant and we figure out what is a good, appropriate, conservative number. It'll actually be a little bit higher than that, but I'd rather err on the smaller side. In our programs here, again, you'll see in our industry, that's our marketing, that's our travel. Again, just going back to the pre-COVID levels, our retail talent, that's our work keys, our retail attraction. The projects is, that's typically where we help the city fund the $300,000 for the transit system, but I believe the CARES Act has accommodated that project there. And then the GNA, the personnel and benefits, the increase there, that is the 3% increase for the staff and my team, in line with the cities. And then also, I did lose two people last year that moved on to greater things and hired two more people. So there is no, the only increase in that is the 3%. Office expenses did increase, have increased that just slightly because, as everything else, the cost is increasing. Insurance and professional services, professional services includes our legal and our accounting and auditing. Then in our business park, our maintenance, that's our grass cutting, trash pickup. We, in the past, have had some serious problems with people dumping out there, and that continues to be an issue. So we have to spend taxpayer money to go clean up a taxpayer asset, which befuddles me. But debt service, that is the debt on our bonds that we issued for the trails and the refinance of the Longview North Business Park. The non-fixed assets, office FFNE, again, this has stayed the same since I've been here for the past five years. And then real property, we develop site plans, do phase-one evaluations, wetlands delineations in our park with these funds. So nothing's changed here. And then you'll see our scheduled incentive payments for the upcoming year has increased because we have some new projects online, $640,000. And then our scheduled payments for the manufacturing academy is $50,000 that we'll extend through this year. And from all of that, you will see, from all of our obligations, we have over $300,000 more for new project allocation if we are successful in getting new projects here in Longview. So that's a very positive thing for us. And then our fund balance is $10 million. That is decreased, that decrease is shown there mainly because of the Gap project. That's it in a nutshell. We paid the incentive, cash incentive upfront, which is unlike what we typically do projects where we fund them on the backside. But projects of that magnitude require a little bit different way of doing things. Then in our capital funds budget, you'll see the trails funding that I showed earlier, $677,000. The George Ritchie and McCann signal at $60,000. The new office, we still are trying to find, working with the architect, we've spent very little money, $7,000 or so. We're still working with the architect to try to get this thing under budget, under the $2 million. So we're not adding any new money to it, just carrying the $2 million that's been previously approved for the upcoming year. And then other potential capital projects, one of the things that the board, LECO board has discussed and I presented in total agreement, that we use that money to help further develop the lots in our business parks, grading, clearing, grubbing, so forth. So we're not transferring any money in from the general fund. And then if we spend all of the money, we still have a little bit of a fund balance at the end there. And that's it, and I will be open to any questions anyone has.
Wayne, very, very nice job of budgeting and presenting to us, and I appreciate you all and your conservative approach. I also appreciate the economic benefits that both the city and the county receive from all of y'all's hard work. I think that speaks for itself. Over the 10-year haul, we're making more than we're giving you. So that's a good, that's a good return on our investment. Keep up the good work. Any questions, Mr. Mansfield? Mr. Pertle?
How is the new office coming along? What is the schedule? What is the fees? How much overruns were the estimated costs?
Right now, we're about $900,000 over budget.
Okay. Who gave us that estimate to start with?
We, when we sent out, we were doing this as a construction manager at risk. So we sent out proposals to all the local contractors that could handle this type of project. We sent out, I believe there were five or six, only three responded, and we selected RLM. So we've been working with Potter Architects and RLM to determine that cost.
Do you know why the cost to that $900,000 over?
Building material, cost of building materials has gone up. Then also, we ran into some potential foundation issues under the soil there at the old school. That's a significant part of it. So we're trying to find some creative ways to help offset that cost.
How many square feet is that facility?
8,000, just under eight. We did a, we did a, working with the architect, we did a needs assessment on the space that would be used, because not only in our office, but also for the boardroom, and taking into mind things like COVID for the spacing that would be required. Yes?
And I think, this isn't on the stuff you're talking there, but people from Spring Hill, I'm sure, very happy and appreciative of the $60,000 you're spending on the light there on George Ritchie and McCann. That's been a big issue, and we do appreciate your help there.
Yes, sir.
I have a question also. I don't remember which plot it was, but the one that showed the 17 projects that have been worked on over the 17, over the last five years?
Yes.
Can we go back to that plot?
That was the very first or second one, I believe.
Can you tell me which of those, I know Kamatsu is in South Longview, but out of that, which are actually in?
Colony Cabinet, Hatco, Aon Coil, Keep Right, and Aviagen.
Okay. The asterisks, why are the asterisks? Why Kamatsu?
Kamatsu, we actually did not provide them financial assistance, but we did assist them with, in some other ways.
Okay.
The Aviagen is, the asterisk is there because it's actually in Harrison County.
Okay.
But Kamatsu did increase jobs.
Yes, sir.
But you showed zero.
Oh, no, well, at that time, no. They, when this was, came about, they retained the jobs. Now, they have added some jobs since then. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a small Dollar General question. That 632 total jobs, does that only include out at the warehouse?
I'm sorry? Only jobs at the warehouse?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's only the warehouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Great job, Wayne, by the way.
Thank you.
You have a question, Mr. Mansfield?
Dollar General Transportation?
Some of the, some of the truck drivers for Dollar General are Dollar General employees, and some of them are contract employees.
Yeah, that was one of the first things they tried here, as opposed to the others.
So those do not include, we can only include FTEs from Texas Workforce Commission in our determinate employees. And so the contract employees, whether they're the truck drivers, maintenance people, or whoever, we cannot include in those numbers.
I make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
And Wayne, now that the budget's been approved, I want to, I want to, just because Mr. Pertle brought up a good point, we've talked about this. We know the overruns, but I appreciate you keeping our budget at $2 million, which is what we approved for you to do, and finding a way to make that work. Because I know you have money, you could go and do it if you wanted to, but that's not what we talked about. And I appreciate you all being prudent about that and staying firm on that and find a way to get to where we, where we're all comfortable, okay?
We're trying.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We are now, consider a resolution, authorize city manager, the city manager does need to negotiate and execute a lease for office space. Mr. Hera for the visitor center.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm excited tonight to present to you an idea that I think will help us move forward and improve our level of service, both for our Visit Longview program and our Main Street program. As we all know, the city has invested a lot of money in our downtown over the last several years. We've made some huge improvements, and we've also seen a lot of life returning back to our downtown in terms of businesses, restaurants, museums, all kinds of activity happening downtown. Several years ago, we moved our visitor center into our city hall, and I think that was always intended to be a temporary move because we had space available at the time. And so for the last several years, we've been looking around at some opportunities to be able to get downtown within the walking core of our downtown and have a presence there for our visitor center, as well as offices for our Visit Longview and Main Street staff. So as we all know, location is important, and we feel that location is very important, especially for these particular services that we provide through the City of Longview. This is funded by our hotel occupancy tax dollars, and it is a service that is primarily geared for visitors, but also has an impact to our local residents as well. As we've looked around at multiple other locations throughout the state and anywhere else you might go, a lot of times, where will you find a visitor center? It's very often within their downtown area, or if they have a key visitor amenity, it'll be in location near that. One of the other trends that we've been seeing is a lot of visitor centers have been adding gift shops, retail elements that are part of that. You might have seen a recent story in Tyler where they've done the same thing. They actually just recently moved their facilities out of the Longview Chamber of, I'm sorry, out of the Tyler Chamber of Commerce building into a space right on their square, and they have a retail space. As a part of that, we went and visited it. It's a very nice facility, and it's in conjunction with their Main Street programs right on the square. So we would actually like to do the same kind of thing and be able to add a gift shop for souvenirs and unique local items. Some of those things that we've been talking about is having ways to be able to have items that are made here or in Longview, in the East Texas area, in addition to things that you might expect to find in a gift shop. But we'd like to highlight some of those things that make us unique. So that is our goal in doing this. We've been looking around for quite some time for the right space, and so these are some of the things that we have taken into account. Obviously, visibility, usability, and visitor accessibility, so making a good spot, a good location for them. We wanted to be in the proximity to the walkable core of downtown Longview, highest and best use for location. This is probably one of the things that slowed us down the most in finding another location because, obviously, we all know, there has been turnover downtown. There have been buildings available, but I didn't want to take a building that may have a higher or better use within the private sector, such as as a restaurant or a ready-to-go retail space, because we would be unique in that we would be a mixture of office space and wanting to have some retail space. So didn't want to take some of the buildings that have become available. We also wanted to take into account the cost, including the amount of capital investment required, as well as the short-term and long-term viability of that. And I want to speak for a second on that last point, which is that short-term versus long-term viability. Honestly, this one would probably be more in the short term in terms of how long would we be there. We're looking at this one as a three-year term is what we'll be looking at. The long-term best-case scenario, obviously, for some of our city facilities, would be to own the building rather than to lease. There have not been some facilities available along those lines, and obviously, for us to build and construct one at this time is going to take some considerable lead time. So we're recommending to be able to do a lease for that purpose as we look at that. So I wanted to look at the location that we're recommending, that is 109 West Tyler Street. So if you're familiar with that block, if you can imagine where Oil Horse is, Deb's Downtown Cafe, as well as the Ollie Skate Shop, it is directly adjacent to those facilities across the street from Silver Grizzly. So the building looks like this. We would not necessarily put the logo on the top there, but just so you can get an idea of what that, what that building looks like. So it would have a unique identifiable location for the visitor center. The inside looks something along these lines, so it's, it's all in very good shape, basically move-in-ready for what we would need to do. There are two, two very small modifications that we would need to do, but very, very minor, changing to doors essentially. And then some of the retail space that we would be looking at here, as well as the offices. The lease, like I said, this building is that 109 West Tyler Street. That building is owned by Dan Soree. He recently moved his offices to the former Palaya Law Firm. So he has moved out and vacated the space and is interested in, in working with us and has been very easy to work with. His preference would be to be able to do it as essentially a all-inclusive lease, which, so that, that price there would be all utilities and, and other expenses that you would expect along those lines. We talked about a three-year term, but with quite a bit of flexibility in that if another situation became available, then we would have an early termination clause in there with no penalty because he wants to be able to work with us and allow it to, to work out. This facility, as we looked at it, going back to that, the piece about cost, this one, like I said, is basically move-in-ready for us. We looked at many other buildings, both as lease options and others, and the costs were all in the same ballpark when you take into account everything. Some that were move-in-ready were very, very similar cost. Others were a little bit lower cost, but presented significant upfront capital cost that we would have had to do. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Question, Mr. Hera on this?
I do. I visited with Sean the other day on this. After looking at this, I really didn't know we had this here. I'll be honest, the nativity I've had on this, I didn't know that. I apologize for that. But in the long-term viability of this, we talked about where we could go with this, and you suggested one place, and I really didn't like that. And I asked you if we could look into LECO's building, since that's our building, that's the city's building. If we could, when that was being built and designed, if we could work something into that for us, it would be brand-new, it would be to what we needed, and we wouldn't have to pay a monthly lease on it because right now, we're, you know, we're looking at way over $100,000 in, in lease money for three years. And if we had something that was ours, that was made to fit for us, I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable doing this than I would be leasing this and then going to your second option that you mentioned to me, because that's just basically taking our money and giving it to somebody else when we could use it for ourselves, for LECO even, you know? I know it didn't sit real well with you, but that's, that's my thought on it, and I, I felt like that was a better option to me, to be able to live with this right here. But anyway, that's, that's...
Sure. I mean, I'm open to any other long-term option that we look at. Like I said, I think the best long-term is having a facility that it would be publicly owned, where you go that route. So the, the option that we discussed is, I've been talking with Judge Stout with regard to the parking garage that he has had plans to build downtown, and he has been amenable to, as part of that design, to carve out, he's planning to have essentially storefront space at the garage. And so what we're talking with him about is the possibility, because he's, he had some, he was planning to have some of the county offices with that building, but he had additional space available, as if we had a prime location so that when you came downtown, we could say, come downtown, park in the garage, the visitor center is in the garage at that prime corner location. And so he's amenable to that as well, but obviously, that is many years probably away from being completed and designs complete. from being completed and designs complete and all of those, but other options certainly open to those as well. It's just all of those probably a couple of years away at closest. So within this, we plan on having, there would be four full-time staff. We would probably also have some part-time staff that could, could assist as well.
So you would have to hire additional staff, two staff?
So we do have already, we haven't had anybody in this role during the pandemic is temporary part-time folks that help with special events and those kinds of things. One of the things that we would hope to do by getting downtown is, again, to be able to increase our services, being able to participate in downtown events that are taking place, being able to have extended hours, which that doesn't make as much sense if we're here in city hall versus being in the middle of where activity takes place.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think it is very important to be downtown. I totally agree with that assessment, and I think actually, to Steve's point, I think the increased visibility of that specific spot would be really excellent. That's, you know, when I go on a date night downtown now, that's right in the area that I would walk by, and if nothing else, people would see that that was a city of Longview resource and could wander in and learn about what services we provide there. I think it is really important that we emphasize and continue to emphasize downtown and just general Longview support. You know, here's the great things that you can do in Longview, come check them out, and that's the perfect spot for it. So we should be doing everything we can to support increasing visibility. So I think it's amazing. I've been in that building, it's very nice, much nicer than my office, and I think that's a very reasonable cost for the space and the location.
I visited with you earlier, Sean, and I, and I expressed my concerns about this. My concern is, it's a lot of money to pay per month for, for staff members. It's a large building that I'm not sure we can utilize all of it. If the gift shop doesn't pan out, then we're paying a lot of money for space that we're not really utilizing. And those are all, those are my negative comments. My positive comments are, you know, I think it is important to be visible downtown. I think we need to support downtown when we can, and I don't want this to be a long-term thing, because I think renting is for people that can't own in this situation, and we don't need to be in that. Our whole goal of having the bond issue and getting everybody at the police department was to not have to rent space for city, city buildings any longer and city staff. And so I don't want to vary from that. I understand this is a, a short-term necessity, which I think we can, we can, I can swallow it, but I'm not real thrilled about it. I, I don't, I, I like the concept, but it's a lot of money. And I understand it's coming from the hotel occupancy tax, it's not coming out of our general fund, but that hot money, we use it for other things as well. So I want to be very cautious how we spend that money. So, you know, I get it, and I, I know you've looked at a lot of things, and I know you have to make a decision at some point in time. I wish there was a perfect scenario, which there's probably not going to be, and I understand that, but just know our concerns and keep that at the forefront, that we don't, I don't want this to be a long-term deal, because I think it's a bad deal long-term. Short-term, we can, we can get by with it, but long-term, it's not a good deal for us. Okay?
I agree, I agree. And I wish the price was smaller, I do. It was just as we kept looking, this, this is where, to, to fit the needs that we had without huge additional cost, absolutely.
Any discussion?
I also mentioned the bond to Sean about, we were trying to move everything from downtown over to here to cut our rental costs and everything, and that was part of the discussion. So that's why I brought up the third option to him, because, like you said, mayor, we need to own this, it needs to be ours, and the viable place that we're going to, we can, we can design it for what we need it for, and maybe some of Leadco's folks can intermingle with some of our folks as far as staff. I don't know how that could work or not. Adding four more people to the staff, you know, for a building that is down here right now, or a, a business that's down here right now, how many people come in every day or every week and just to visit with that? And then we're putting something down in the middle of town that, is it going to be opened at night when the night light starts, or is it just going to be open from eight to five or nine to five during the week? I mean, Mrs. Sahara goes down there, maybe eats lunch on a weekend or something, are we going to be open on a Saturday or Sunday down there with, with staff and paying them? So it's not just the location to me, it's the other amenities that are going to be added to this. Like the mayor said, the $3,000 on a short-term, I can probably look at and agree with, but on a long-term deal, if we're having to set this up, I want something that's mine, and mine means the citizens of Longview. So that's why I came up with that third option.
Good discussion, Mr. Carpenter.
Dr. Mack, I, I looked at the 2021 budget, and I looked at the 2122 budget. I don't see, based on where we're allocating the hotel motel tax, where this funding would come from.
Well, the hot, the hot money, we, we, we use it for, parts of that money are used to fund our nonprofits and our cultural arts and things like that.
Right, but I mean, those, those grants and those continuations of things that we've done with that previous money, assuming are coming back to us each year for subsequent funding.
Well, of course, yes. Always want more than what we have.
Right.
They're always asking for more than what we have to allocate.
But I mean, now we, we've got a $36,000 that's got to come out of what we have to...
Well, I mean, we have it, when the hot, the hot, the hotel occupancy tax makes a lot of money. I mean, it's, it's a big number. But we don't want to spend it unwisely, and that's, I think, what we're all trying to say. We, we understand we need to do something, we got to get them out of this area, we get that. So I think what we're all, I think what we're saying, I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but I think we're saying, we can accept this for now, but we're not going to accept this for a long term, okay? I think that's what we're coming to, but I'm not going to speak for everybody. We'll have to have a motion in a second and see if we vote for it, okay?
I, I think that you ought to point somebody up here to work with this group as a council representative on this, so we'll know what's going on, because like I said before, I didn't even know we had this here, and that's my own stupidity, I know, but, you know.
Well, when we brought them in there, we thought it was a good idea. I mean, I remember we talked about it, we thought it was a good idea, and at the time, it was a good idea, but we've not grown that idea, that it's, it's, we want it to be more than what it is, and that's the whole thing. And it's, it's never going to be more than what it is where it's located, because it's in city hall, it's in, it's not going to be what the potential could be. We, we've got, we've got a stranglehold on it, and so I get it, and I understand it, and I want to move it forward, but I want to move it forward very cautiously, not cautiously, I want to know that, you need to know that this is short-term, period, is short-term, okay? In three years, I think is, I mean, that's about as long a term as, that's, that's long short-term for me. Short-term for me is a year, you know, but, well, short-term means three years, actually, because I'll be gone, but, so, a little fun there. Okay, but you, you're hearing what we're saying, and I think if, if someone wants to be involved in this with, from the council, I'm not going to appoint someone, someone volunteer. If you want to work with Sean on it, then work with Sean on it, and let's see this go forward in a, in a good, have a good ending result, okay? Is that agreeable to everyone? Okay, then, then at this point, we'll have a motion if there is one.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good discussion, council. Thank you for that, for, for, it's nice when we talk through things like this, and we all know where we are and what we're looking for, because it just makes us more aware of what we should be doing. Out of the community interest, Mr. Carpenter.
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder, the CPR initiative on the 28th and 29th of, of this month, where you can come out and, and please join us as far as volunteers. We will be doing property cleanup, basic home repairs, there will be free smoke detectors and something for your pets as well, vaccinations and microchips. There will also be a COVID clinic on the 29th that is being sponsored by Beverly Clinic here in Longview, Texas.
Thank you.
Mr. Wade?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Ms. Ishihara.
I do. So one of the things we approved in the consent agenda, I wanted to just briefly talk about, which is the Spay It Forward campaign. That is a campaign that the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center is kicking off, thanks to some grant funding from both the Humane Society of East Texas and Longview Paws. So thank you to both of those organizations for their contributions. Most, everybody here knows, but for those watching, the animal shelter opened five years ago, and as was anticipated at the time, the intake then has decreased as we've been able to educate the community, adopt out spayed and neutered animals. So our intake number has continued to go down. However, we could always do better, so now is the time for us to start taking preventative measures, and what that looks like is the Spay It Forward campaign. That is a financial opportunity for those that are unable to spay or neuter their pets due to cost, to come and receive some financial assistance at the Animal Care and Adoption Center through these donations. So if your pet is not spayed or neutered, or you know somebody whose pet needs to be spayed or neutered, please have them contact the shelter. You can still use your vet of choice. Almost all of our local vets are participating, and we thank them very much for their contribution there as well. And I believe that's it. If you haven't been to the animal shelter, please go visit, adopt, donate, volunteer, we would be glad to have you, and spay and neuter your pets.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Wade.
Mr. Pertle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds?
Oh, sir.
Okay, just a real quick COVID update. I really thought we'd be through with these, but I'm, I'm not, I'm plagued with it. If you'll recall, on the ninth of this month, we had a press conference indicating the severity of the COVID that we're experiencing in Longview right now. And on the ninth, I only have Longview Regional Hospital numbers tonight. I was not, Good Shepherd did not provide numbers for me tonight, even though we asked for them, we didn't get them. On the ninth, which is 10 days ago, there were 47 COVID patients in Longview Regional Hospital. Today, there are 78 COVID patients in Longview Regional Hospital. There were 16 in the ICU on the ventilator, there are now 24 patients in the ICU, 23 of them on the ventilator. There are no ICU beds available at Longview Regional Hospital. The average age of a COVID patient at Longview Regional Hospital is less than 50 years old. So those are just hard factual numbers, so you can, and, and, once again, the majority of these, the high majority, the very, very high majority are unvaccinated that are in the hospital, and all the ones in the ICU are unvaccinated. So, you know, there's a correlation there. Once again, no, I'm trying to make you go get a vaccine, but the vaccines are still available. It's, it's obvious that if you are vaccinated, you have a less likely chance of ending up, ending up in the hospital if you do get COVID. If you're unvaccinated, you have a higher chance of getting the, getting the virus and ending up in the hospital and on a ventilator. So we're having more and more younger people get this virus, this, this variant, and we're having more and more younger people succumb to this virus, which is the most sad thing of all. So it hurts me to have to do these updates, but I'm going to give you the numbers as I get them. I wish I had the numbers from the other hospital, but I'm sure their correlation is the same as regionals. It's, I think, I, I, my understanding is Good Shepherd is also out of beds, and they are on divert, and they are now no longer doing elective cases and having all of their OR staff, staff floors to take care of COVID patients. So it's serious, and so heed the warning. Hope you all are safe, wash your hands, social distance, wear your masks. Mr. Wade?
Can you repeat those numbers again?
Yes, sir.
So you said, as of August 9th?
August 9th, we had 47 patients with COVID at Longview Regional Hospital. Today, there are 78, 10 days later, 47 to 78, and then 16 in ICU, we've gone from 16 to 24 in 10 days. And that's just at Regional Hospital. Now, remember, on the ninth, Regional had 47, Good Shepherd had almost 100, so they're almost double of what good, of what regionals are. So I'm sure their numbers are the same, same ratio, because they're just, they have just more beds, they have more capacity, but they're, they're, they're at capacity as well, I, I know that. I just don't know the exact numbers, so I can't.
Can I add, on Tuesday, a regional reported that 97 were still unvaccinated of those numbers.
97%.
Yeah, so.
97% or 97 of the 100?
97% of their patients were unvaccinated.
When, when, when there were 47 patients in the, in the unit, 46 of them were unvaccinated. So they're 78 now, and I'm sure that's a high number of unvaccinated. I mean, it, but that's nationwide, that, we're seeing that all across the nation. This is not news just in Longview. Nationwide, hospitalized patients are majority, majority of the patients are unvaccinated, and that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah, what's sad is that it's happening in our backyard, and these are people that we work with, these are people we go to church with, you know, these are people that we see, and a lot of us have a social media presence, and I, it saddens me to go through my news feed sometimes and see all of the deaths that are reported there, and it terribly breaks my heart.